Hey Suzanne, can you hear us?
We can hear you on zero.
I can hear you.
Wonderful.
Thank you all ready? I'm gonna call the meeting to order.
We're already in order. We called it ordered prior to the executive session.
We came out of the executive session with no action divorced, so.
And I'll give you the stuff when we want it.
Yeah, Paul took the minutes. Are there any comments from board members on topics not on the agenda? Don't hear anything? Nothing? Are you gonna cover your announcement for July 1st under the topics of manager?
Yep, well, I can, I don't have topics of manager, so I have to do.
Okay. I don't have any. If I do, I'll try to remember them through. I didn't write any down, other than that which I'm gonna ask that you share with the with the public now. So go ahead, Brandon.
Alright, so I am very excited to let everyone know that I'll be moving to Weathersfield on July 1st. My wife and I really look forward to it. We would have been here sooner. But as you know, the pandemic caused some delays in that. But we'll be here on July 1st.
Do you have any other comments?
Congratulations, thank you.
Yes, then we've been, we've been trying to get that to happen and we're working together and so now it is.
Let's just say, just say that if I may, a big part of a holdup, even if there wasn't a pandemic, is availability.
Yes. Are there any other, do you have any other comments that are not on the agenda?
I do.
Okay.
So, as you know, the town of Weathersfield will be receiving ARPA funding. There's little guidance right now on how to use that funding. Tomorrow at 1 o'clock, there's a Zoom meeting with VLCT. And we intend on learning a lot about how to use the funds, how to report on the funds and so forth, how much funding each town is getting. So at the next select board meeting, we'll be able to issue more, more guidance and more on what we can use those funds for.
I just want to remind people that the ARPA is the, is the $1.9 trillion federal monetary package that was distributed, of which Vermont got some. And those are COVID-related recovery. And, and so that's what that stands for, American Rescue Plan Act, yes. Are there, you're all set now?
Yeah, all set.
For comments. Is anybody online that has any topics or comments that are not on the agenda?
I just remembered one. I just wanna thank Jeff and Lisa and Jerry for putting out flags. American flags look good.
I saw that on social media, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Is anybody online that has any comments not on the agenda? Nothing? Okay. We'll take up the minutes from May 3rd. Need a motion to approve, please.
So move second?
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of May 3rd. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I have something on the last page of the draft. It still has John Harrison on there. We could somehow fix that.
Yes. On the signature page. Where is that located?
It's been, it's been a few months now, so it's time to change it. It's on the very last page of the draft from last month's minutes.
Everybody signs for it.
Ah, okay. I'm sorry about that. We'll, we'll have that taken care of.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of, of May 3rd, 2021 with the noted change. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Year-to-date finance report. Rosalie, are you on? Can you hear us?
She's muted.
I'm gonna move forward with the financial report.
I can, sorry, I just take a minute.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that you could hear us and we could hear you. Go ahead.
I can, thank you.
Yep, nice. Uh, go ahead, Brandon.
Alright, so as of April 30th, general fund revenues are at 92%. Does everybody have a copy of the report? Okay, so general fund revenues are at 92% or $1,380,000 and our expenses are at 82%. If you look down at, if you look over at the revenues, you can see some items highlighted in red and others in green. The red is what's still yet to be collected as a revenue and the green is what we've collected in excess of what we anticipated when the budget was built. Looking down at expenses, you see all green there, nothing's overspent. But there are some department or a couple of departments or one department that looks like it might come in a little bit over. Moving over to the highway fund. Well first, does anybody have any questions on the general fund?
Yes, because if you go down a little further, I think maybe, I'm gonna scroll through here, or I did. It seemed to be that there was a, there was a report that got it even closer to date. So when is this, when is, when are these? Maybe I missed it in the very beginning of your report. One of these good for?
Up to April 30th.
Okay.
So what happens is the month ends on April 30th and then between that time and the select board meeting, we're pulling all of that data in and then compiling the report. So you usually get it the second meeting of the select board each month.
Right, so, so there are still two more full months beyond this report that'll be booked into the 2021.
Correct. Yep.
Alright. Are there any other questions on this? The only reason I was asking that was because of what he pointed out before, which was when we looked through this about where things are at, about what expenses are where, to try to get a handle on what, what we'd be talking about. So what is the, so what is the targeted number then? Would it be 80? Or what would it be?
So you can, you can have a targeted number, but some expenses come in at different times.
Yes.
And some revenues come in at different times throughout the year. So next year, we're gonna be, we're gonna basically try to show each month where we should be at percentage-wise, but right now that hasn't been done and that's a pretty creative system to create. 88%, 86 to 88%.
That would be the target, okay.
For revenues and expenses at this point. You can see that administration's at 94%, but there's a wash between admin and finance and finance is at 61%. So you'd have to balance that to, to show the true percentage there. Library is under. Town clerk is under. Listers are over. Land use is right on target, police is right on target and fire services is right on target.
Okay, let's go to highway.
Alright, for the highway, revenue is at 87% right on target. You will see that there's numbers again in red and some that are in green. And that red basically just means that revenue hasn't come in yet, but that revenue specifically on the top line comes in consistently, so that $157,000 will basically be divided between May and June. Stated to highway came in at $8,000 over. Permit revenue is right on target. Service to other departments hasn't been booked yet. We deemed it unnecessary to make journal entries each month. It's, it's a service from one department to the other, so we're just gonna book that once in June to save time and be more efficient. And we plan on either doing that at the beginning of the year or the end of the year moving forward. We can have that discussion in an hour later on. Looking down at the expense side of the highway fund, personnel is under 79%. Office is right on target. Highway garage and truck expenses is underspent and road materials and repairs is underspent. Fees and permits. I believe you'll see that number decrease in the, in the May report. And fund balance and reserves have been transferred. So overall, revenues are at 87%, expenses are at 87%. Any questions on the highway fund?
And as we get closer to the year end, or at least for one more month, we'll get some, a little bit greater information. For instance, tomorrow or the next day is our tax quarterly payment. So when that, when it does settles from that within a week or two, we'll gain even more information about where these are gonna line up. Even the general fund as well.
I've completed preliminary projections for all departments. In between now and the next meeting, we're gonna be really drilling into those to make sure that the numbers are, are fine tuned enough to present to the select board. Moving on to solid waste. Preliminary projection shows, shows us at an $8,000 deficit in solid waste. And that's primarily due to us not charging for compost. What's the bill for compost?
It's $26 a bucket a week and it's six buckets. I can tell you real quick, sorry.
So basically what happened is in the beginning of the fiscal year, we started getting charged for compost and we don't, we don't charge for compost. Did you get your number?
Yeah, $8,112.
So the deficit's coming from, from compost.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have that, like we have recycling, we have trash, we have all that, like C and D, can we, can we break that out?
I can break it out.
So we can see that and start understanding that, or is that too much, do you think?
So to break out, what are you looking to get broken out?
Well, just like that number that we asked, if we just had that in here as a line item.
I can break out compost.
At least for the discussions you and I and Ray have, I think would be good to have. Since we're paying and not getting anything on it, I think we need to track that.
Yep. So we might have to have a discussion on whether to charge for compost or whether to build it into the permit sticker. I know that our fixed costs are paid for with the permit sticker and our variable costs are paid for with the punch ticket. And since compost is a variable cost, we might wanna consider a punch for compost or, or building a new punch card with a dollar punch for compost or something. But as of right now, we're in the green, so our revenues are at 90% and our expenses are at 88%. There is, to cover that $8,000 deficit, we have a couple of options there. And that's if my projection, our projections are correct. We're pretty sure that they're, they're gonna be right on target. We can pull back highway services to the transfer station, $4,000 and then we can pull back general fund admin support to the transfer station, $4,000 and split it that way. Basically what that would mean is less revenue for the highway department, less revenue for the general fund, but we balance the enterprise fund, which is, which is what we should be doing. So we'll have those discussions as we get closer.
What do, what, I got a question. What, what happens to the, to the compost? If it goes in a big container and then goes off-site somewhere?
Vermont grow, grow compost, Vermont picks it all up. There's another vendor in the area that I'm gonna research and see if they have better prices. They're a really small, just startup company. To add to that conversation about the compost, I'm working on doing a program to incentivize, incentive, making incentive for people to, to compost more at home. There's programs through the state where we can actually buy compost bins or people can order compost bins at a really cheap rate, different styles of compost bins. That might be something going into next year we should maybe look into. It's not a cost to us at all. We're just helping people buy.
So, so you're telling us tonight that somebody is giving you a bill for an amount of $8,000 to pick up the compost from the transfer station?
$26 per tote, average tote, and it's six totes a week that we're filling.
Then I don't know what the board feels about that even tonight, but I'm more than happy to say that it's gotta go under the punch system because it doesn't. For me, if, if I'm a resident and I don't bring any in, then I'm not sure why I would have to pay for it. So the simplest way to handle that would be to say that, that the, the workers at the transfer station charge what they seem to be appropriate, whether it's a punch or whatever, for the amount that's coming in. It, it's obvious to me that, that the administration can verify that this is a cost now, a burden to our facility, unlike the recyclables, at least at this moment. So like you can compare it to newspaper or cardboard, which we're not getting charged $8,100. But it, so is that, do you think that's amortized over a year? We've been doing that for a year now?
Starting July, we started this before July, but yeah.
Okay, so, so we've already gone through the calendar and we've already figured out a year of what it's costing us.
Right.
So we have a really good handle about what we're getting for, for compost coming into the transfer station.
I, I think Brandon and I had a discussion about the $1 punch card. I think that might be the way to go because 350 seems really excessive for a little bag of compost myself.
Is it okay if this board, then do we all understand that we're gonna leave it up to administration to try to correct that? Cause I'm, I'm okay with that as, as a, as a management move. I mean, they've identified a deficit, they've identified the source, we've gone through a year. Makes sense to me.
Things great.
So we don't, we, I don't need to ask for a motion for that. We're just passing the word on to the, to to Ray and Brandon to go ahead and implement a plan then to, to try to, to try to work on the compost.
Okay. Got it.
Good. Thank you. Did you have a question, Ray?
No, I added it to my thing about trying to get people to compost more.
Yep.
I did it already, thanks.
Are there any, are there any questions about the, the solid waste facility or the costs here, the update that we've got? Nothing? Brandon, you're okay with the, the presentation the way it is?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go on now to the local emergency management plan. Do you have something, you had something in front of me or no? Is that something for me to sign, Brandon, or?
Yes.
I know you've been working on, you, you had to meet a deadline for an extension for that.
Yes. So basically annually, we have to update our emergency management plan in the case any changes occurred. In our case, we had a couple of changes, a couple of phone numbers that changed in our emergency management plan. In addition, John Harrison left the select board, Kelly O'Brien joined the select board. And we had to put her information in the emergency management plan. One change between the, the plan that you have and the plan that I need to submit is I need to add Ms. O'Brien's cell phone number, which I received from Suzanne today. So that's one, one more change that I'll make tomorrow morning. Other than that, everything's complete and ready to, ready to approve.
So do, do you want an approval for tonight's meeting and a motion, or do you wanna wait till the next meeting?
Yep. Tonight and a motion would be fantastic, so I can get that over to regional planning in the morning. It's the same emergency management plan that you and I created with police and fire and emergency EMS services and the school department with those couple of updates.
So does the whole board sign it, or do I sign it? Do you sign it, or how does that work?
You would sign it and I would sign it.
Okay.
But the select board approves it.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the, divorce?
Is it the same one that was in the packet?
It is.
Cause Gee Marie Oatman's name is still in there and I don't think she's still the principal.
She's, she's still there until the end of this, until the end of the school year.
To the end of the school year, is that okay?
So that'll change for the next year, it'll be someone new.
Yeah, the next emergency management plan will change and there's enough contacts over at the school and over at the town. If, we need to get the new guy included. What was his name again?
Brian something.
I just know that Gee Marie was leaving.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the 2021-22 local emergency management plan for the town of Weathersfield?
So move.
Is there a second? Motion been made seconded to approve the local emergency management plan for 2021-2022 for the town of Weathersfield and I'll note that it, it could be, you know, at one of our meetings amended at any time and improved to, to add, to add things, so. That's always the case with something like that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. If you can, and I, I heard you say Brandon, that I sign it and then you sign it, or?
Yeah, we can do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Next up, we have a lister request to file for a 21-day extension. This has to do with the grand list. You wanna take this, Brandon, or who? Is, is anybody online or anything to, to do this? I mean, we have something in our, in our packet. Did you, did you speak with them today, Brandon, or how, how do you wanna do this?
I received this, this letter with a request to put it on the select board agenda. It seems from, from the letter received that the listers are requesting a 21-day extension due to COVID-19.
So how would that affect us navigating our way through the tax rate schedule? What is the current deadline? So if we?
I see that Carolyn's.
In any, in any, in any year?
Carolyn just unmuted her microphone, I think she.
Okay. Yes, hi Carolyn.
Hi, our, our deadline is June 4th.
Okay, that's under a normal, that's like on, for the normal for this year?
Correct.
Yeah, it's June 4th, so you're asking for that to get moved to June 25th?
Correct, although we hope that we don't need to deploy 21 days.
So, but my question to Brandon was how that would have an implication to us printing and getting the tax bill out and setting the tax rate? So that, it has an obvious implication to that.
Yes. It would set things back.
Do you have a question, Steve?
At most, I think probably a week.
Okay. Did, did you have a question, Steve?
I was just going to suggest that it's not going to have a 21-day impact because you don't get, you don't get the school tax information until the end of June, the beginning of July anyway. So the impact, we can't do anything in terms of setting the tax rate until early July, so it's not gonna have a 21-day impact.
So you're saying we don't even need to do this, that, that, that it's kind of, the information won't be gathered in time to make the tax rate anyway?
Well, there might be some things I'm overlooking in terms of whether there's a verification of the state or some, something else that has to happen after the grand list gets submitted. But yes, we're not gonna be able to set the tax rate and send out tax bills until sometime in July after we have all the school data.
So my, in, in any other year, my, my thought was we'd set, well, I think from history, if it's, if it's serving me right, that we would always, depending on when the legislature adjourned, of course, which generally was in, in the beginning of May, so I think that there's a delay there. I don't think, I think John told me the other day that they were gonna, they were headed for the 20th or the 25th for an adjournment. Would be that we would set in any normal year, which obviously anything hasn't been normal for the last year, our tax rates in June, then get it to the printers and then people would have their tax bills in their hands in early July and then the first tax quarterly payment would be somewhere around the 10th or so of August. Last year, we delayed that by one month. We did not have, our first tax quarterly payment was September, but then we kept it in line for the rest of the time. We went September, November, February and May. But you're, you're saying some information that I didn't know, Steve, that, that the school isn't going to have their information ready for the tax bill until the end of June anyway?
Correct. The state does a budget data collection from all school districts that's due on the 1st of June. And then what they say is that they will then publish the tax, they will distribute the tax rates by the 30th of June.
Oh.
They could be a couple of days early, oftentimes they're a couple of days late. So it's usually early July then at the select board meeting that we can set the tax rate. I mean, we could set the town tax rate whenever we have a final grand list, but usually they wanna send out two different tax bills.
Right. Well, here's my, and here's my thought. I, I don't, I don't wanna delay things like we did a year ago, but during the budget process, we had, we had a grand list on December 28th, which was published, that we worked the budgets off. And during the presentation of those budgets, we gave a presentation through each of the three budgets, meaning the general fund, this highway fund and the solid waste, which is an enterprise fund, so that doesn't have any tax money in it other than the fee that we charge for the stickers. But we used a grand list that was given to us on December 28th. So, for the town, through that process, and the voters voted for the budget the way it was presented at that particular time using that particular data. So I'm wondering how much the grand list could possibly change for the town anyway in that time period. Now, I grant you that it may a little bit and, but it will catch up. It's not that it's forever lost. That it will correct itself by when the, when the information is enrolled. It's just, it's just for me, I, I don't wanna hearing what I just heard about the school, that it's apparent that we can't, we're not gonna be able to do, we're not gonna send out two tax bills. We do send the school and the town out jointly and it goes to print that way. What, what's the board's feeling on this? Any comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I don't think it'll set us back any if the school's stuff's not gonna be done until late anyways. I mean, so I don't, I don't see what this will hurt in this case.
Right. Paul?
Yeah, I, I, I have no problem with it. I mean, we had a, we did have a positive COVID case and then if you remember last year, we granted an extension and they, they worked really hard and I don't, I'm not sure if they even used the extension last year, so.
I don't know.
I, I, I think this is more of a backup to make sure that we, you know, in case, so.
Is there a motion then to allow the extension?
Yeah.
I mean, I just heard Carolyn, when she said up to, maybe a week or something, so maybe it's fair to say up to 21 days or something if that's a request.
Yeah. I have to, I have to make a motion on the way it stands right now, right? Just wanted to read that. I'll make a motion to grant the, the request to the listers for the extension. I'm of 21, it says, so this letter specifically says extension time of 21 days. So, I mean, it's, it's, if they get it done sooner, it'll be done sooner. It's just there's no more than 21 days, so. So I'll definitely make that motion, but I do have one comment on, on this I'd like to make before, if I can. I was just curious, Brandon, that the listers, they just gave you this letter. Did they have any communication with you on, on any of the other stuff with, with the reasoning or, or anything?
Well, can, can we, can we just put the motion on the table with a second, then we'll get into discussions?
Sure, sorry.
So the motions are made
Yep.
To allow it, for a 21-day extension for the listers to take for the grand list. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now the motion's been made and seconded.
Thank you.
For a 21-day extension for the grand list. Just for my, just for my own voting record, I would prefer it to say up to, because if it comes in earlier, then it gives us a little more time to, for us to work on whatever the grand list works that we need to do. So if by chance the school comes in earlier or they share the information, that all of this will go to the printer. So if by chance the school comes in earlier, or they share the information, that all of this will go to the printers sooner, and it'll be in the hands of the, the people that pay the bills sooner. Otherwise, if we don't, I just want to fire the warning shot that we may in fact have a due date of September again, rather than August. So, does everybody understand that? Because I'm not sure how long Mike Sankovich needs to print or to gather information. If it's a miracle and it comes in earlier than all these things, it gives us opportunity to be able to send it, to gather up information and send it.
Alright, so I, just, so I'm clear, uh, so you, I guess the way this is worded, what you're worried about is it's just going to say twenty-one days, and then.
Yeah.
Even if it's early, they could hold on to it and just say, well, I got.
Yes, I just, I just, I'd prefer it to say, me, I'd prefer it to say twenty-one, up to, just in case the school comes in and drops the information, or the state does.
No, then, please, the forest, I would like to amend my motion to say up to twenty-one days, which I don't think you'll have to change this letter here, but. I don't know that for sure.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
We made the second, okay. Everybody understand it now, it gives, it grants the twenty-one days if needed, but it just says up to.
But the sooner the possible.
Steve?
Without belaboring it, I know we have issued, select boards in the past have issued this, um, extension as well, and it has not. Delayed anything. We will get the tax, we print, we get tax bills that are blank, and then we just print them here, you know, with our official information. So it's not going to delay the printing of the bills, or getting printed bills, it just affects when we're able to toss them on the printer and produce.
And I don't happen to remember last year's schedule, I do know last year's schedule delayed the payments by a month. We went from August tenth to like September tenth, that's all.
That had more to do.
Really due to state initiatives, they extended the tax deadline, which extended, uh, homestead exemptions.
They've done all that again this year, though, I mean, our taxes were just due on May fifteenth, they, they provided a thirty day extension from April fifteenth. They also granted another thirty days for the homestead. So they followed the same suit as they did a year ago, that's all. I know, because mine, I've been talking to my tax guy. Is there, now, was there any discussion on the motion?
No, I'm good, it's, the motion's good.
Is there any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
Well, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, with granting this, but I do have a question. And, and we sort of started to touch on it just now, with, it happened last year and it's happening this year. But there's reasons for that, that we know are outside of the office. It's, it's not due to any, anything within our office. However, I do recall also, during the budget discussions, we have three listers. We have one that's. Scarc, for lack of a better term, shows up, does that have, or would it have any impact on the timing? And I guess that's a question that has to go through, uh, just Brandon for research, I guess, at this point, I don't expect an answer at this moment, but. If we have three listers for a reason, and only two of them are working, is, does that potentially create a problem, and I, and I don't know the answer to that.
I guess my, my response to that would be you'd have to be able to create whatever the workload is, and whatever the permits are generated, I don't know, that's all. That would be, have to be coordinated through land use, uh, whether or not they were busy or not, or whatever the reasons were that. Particular parcels had to go through some adjustment on the grand list. So I don't know, and I don't know the year over year workloads, did you have a question, Steve?
Well, the list, the budget for listers calls for forty-five hours a week. And what they have done is they have divided their schedule in a way that accounts for the fact that one of them does not work very many hours. So they're still getting, you're still getting forty-five hours a week of listener time. It's not like their schedule has been dramatically reduced because one of them isn't working. You're still getting the production that you would normally get out of the listers, you're just getting more of it out of two people and a little less of it out of the third person.
And, and, but I think the bigger thing would be, we can't, we have no way right now, today, tonight, of comparing workload. About what, what, what the volume would be. That needed to be addressed in a correction of the grand list. Any other, any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I did vote aye.
Okay. Vote to expend seventy-five hundred dollars from the capital reserve, I think this is Martin Hall, is that, oh, no.
Kendrick's Corner.
Kendrick Corner, so it's Highway, uh, for infrastructure.
I'll let Ray take this one.
Okay.
So this is, um. I have some work to do, I want to get it done before the end of June, I gotta replace two four-foot culverts and two three-foot culverts. Uh, we gotta get an excavator in there to do the two four-footers, and I gotta buy the two three-footers. I think. I think we'll have enough money in our budget to cover this. I just want this, just in case we don't, numbers change drastically, I don't want to go ahead and order these culverts and have people come in and put them in and then find out. Seventy-five hundred dollars over budget somewhere. So this is hoping to spend the seventy-five hundred dollars to cover those two expenses, expenses.
We do have two highway funds, one's for motorized, uh, apparatus, and the other is for, uh, infrastructure improvement. So, does the board want to make a motion to transfer seventy-five hundred dollars from the highway reserve. Non-motorized fund, uh, directly into the highway budget for this purpose, for culverts?
So move?
Second.
Motion been made seconded to approve the transfer of seven, up to seven thousand five hundred dollars to, from the highway reserve fund to. The operating highway fund budget for, uh, culverts on Kendrick Corner Road, is there any discussion?
Yeah. I think that's a good move to do, and at the end of the year, if you've got anything left, if you're worried about being over, we could always just dump it back into the reserves, right?
Yep.
And spend funding from those.
I think, so, I think so, so, so when we get closer to the year end, and I've asked Brandon and Ray, and maybe they'll ask Steve to get together, I'm not sure whether that's the treasurer's job, but. But sometimes you can, when they get closer to the year end, they may be able to find that, where they stand financially. And, and it gives you more leverage for a pre-purchase of some time for material. And I'm not talking about a lot, but I'm talking about something that they're going to use, not, not just having a corner.
For instance, the tire chains are on sale ten percent off right now.
Something.
That's gonna go away, that's gonna go away July first, and then the price increase is expected to go up ten percent, so I can actually save twenty percent. So Brandon and I are working closely on that type of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that's just, that's part of business.
Yep.
You have a question?
I, I have one, and I see Steve going to hand it, mine's a quick question, what, what's the balance of the reserve account? That we're taking it from?
Thirty?
Okay, so, that's what I wanted to.
That's the one you guys just put the money in from last year, that divided it up.
Did you have a question, Steve?
Yeah, sorry for being so mouthy, but. Is, we would spend up to seventy-five hundred dollars out of the reserve fund for this purpose. So we wouldn't transfer the total amount, we would just spend up to seventy-five hundred, so he doesn't spend it all, it stays in the reserve fund. If he wants to go over, we'll come back to you folks before we go over.
So if it's not needed, we don't have to transfer anything. If after the end of the year we find out I got a surplus and I don't need to do it, I don't have to do anything. Have to revote that.
So is it a little bit early to pass this motion, Brandon, or what, should we do it anyway, then, if that's the case, because I, is it? I understand it's about administration and keep track of the money.
I just want approval to spend up to that much money if I have to out of that account, I don't need to transfer the money yet.
Okay, so the, so the, so the, my word, transfer, was, was not really what ought to happen, then?
Correct.
So the motion ought to be made to approve the expense out of, directly out of the reserve account for this purpose, how's that?
Up to that much.
Okay, is everybody okay, made the motion, a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I'm.
He voted twice.
Is that, is that, is that aye from a nay from Mr. Tillman?
No, it's no, no nay, it's a, it's a positive yes, I apologize.
E, E I R.
A little late on the uptake.
Okay. Oh, next one up, personnel policy discussion.
I don't see that in the packet online.
Yeah, go back and then click on the packet again, I think those are put on.
We've got like solid waste here next up in line for our, um, for scrolling here, so I'm not sure how that works.
Oh, updated.
I have it.
Take that one.
Third, page thirty-five of one sixty-four.
Okay.
Oh, good God.
Headed.
Why don't you start taking us through this, Brandon, while we're all trying to navigate our way through whatever page it is?
Alright, um, so on May eleventh, uh, we held a staff meeting to review proposed changes to the personnel policy. Um, attendees of this meeting included Olivia Savage, Suzanne Rosalie, Steve Hyer, Ray Stapleton, Floanne, Chris Wood, and Carolyn, Lynesti, and Mark Richardson. Others were invited but did not attend. I attached the personnel policy to all of you in an email for review. Once we receive feedback from the select board, we'll discuss any revisions at our regularly scheduled monthly staff meeting on the third Thursday of each month, which falls on May twentieth this, this month. Following this meeting, we'll add it to the select board agenda on June seventh for approval. The topics that we discussed include the holiday schedule for the town, um, lunch breaks, and vacations. So I'll start off with the holiday schedule for the town. Last year, the select board decided to observe Martin Luther King Day, June, Martin Luther King Junior Day as a holiday. According to the personnel policy, um, full and part-time employees will receive the following paid, um, holiday leave. Uh, New Year's Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and the floating holiday. Which, in parentheses in the personnel policy, says the town manager's discretion. Um, however, a staff meeting would be held and we'd discuss whether, you know, which day would be the best that year, and, and go about it that way. We obtained the following feedback from staff. Add an additional holiday, the Weathersfield School observes twelve paid holidays, and the town currently observes ten paid holidays. By adding an, an additional holiday, we'll be one day closer to the Weathersfield School. The second feedback that we received is, if a holiday falls on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, do employees lose that holiday? Or will the town observe it on the closest scheduled working day? For example, if a holiday falls on a Friday, staff that works on Friday will be scheduled off. But staff that do not work on Fridays will either observe it on Thursday or lose out on the holiday altogether. Additionally, staff that work on Thurs, uh, Friday, work four hours, four and a half hours, and staff that work on Thursday. Work either eight, or ten, or six hours, or five hours, so. You know, what would that, um, what would that look like? And the existing personnel policy states holidays falling on a Friday or Saturday will be observed the preceding Thursday. Holidays falling on a Sunday will be observed the following Monday. Another, uh, comment that we received is. Differentiating between full-time and part-time employees and prorating depending on an employee's schedule, for example. If an employee works fifteen hours a week, then that employee would be entitled to the, the number of hours, um, that they worked. Does anybody have any comments on, on the holiday schedule?
Yes.
Which one said yes for us?
Tell me, yeah.
Having to do, I have mainly comment on if the holiday falls on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and when we're going to observe it. What's commonplace in the world that I come from is that if you happen to be scheduled off on a holiday, you'll have a day added to your PTO bank. So we don't shut down for an additional day just because of a holiday, but you would get a day in your bank for that.
Makes sense.
And then that would kind of would take care of your floating holiday, which brings me to the other. The other point is I really think Columbus Day should be moved to the floating holiday, and you should observe, uh, MLK Day. And the holiday's not even really called Columbus Day anymore.
Indigenous Day.
Yep.
So exchanging Columbus Day for Martin Memorial, I mean, Martin Moro, Martin Luther King Junior Day?
Yeah, and moving Columbus Day to your floating holiday, and then in turn, if we're scheduled to work, you know, scheduled off during a holiday. Then you'll be adding days to their bank to take a floating holiday at a different time on their leisure.
Just becomes a personal day.
Yeah.
Right.
I just want to say too, that the highway department guys have not had a discussion yet, and Brandon said we're going to have a separate meeting for them to have input. Just in case any of the guys are listening online, they understand that they have not been left out of this conversation, we haven't got there yet.
Yeah.
Public awareness. Yes.
My first thing was, okay, and I think I'm up to speed on it now, because last year we voted to observe Martin Luther King Junior Day, but it's not in the list.
Correct, we, we basically used the floating holiday, well, we did use the floating holiday to observe Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Right.
Um, and we, we discussed taking care of it. And that's one of the things that kind of fell off our radar, and it's getting close. So we need to decide how we're going to handle it.
Okay.
So is it, is it on the schedule to be a holiday? Out?
Well. No.
Then it's going to be?
I think you should just name that floating holiday as a holiday, that's what the school ended up doing. We used to have two floatings, and then we just got rid of them and just made them actual holidays, because you can change it to whenever.
Yep.
And it's just as easy just to have a set holiday, and then that way you know you have it every year, and you don't have to worry about, well, am I going to make it this holiday, a Friday, or whatever? It's just easy just to make it a holiday and just leave it.
The only, the only difference is the school observes twelve holidays, and the town observes ten.
Yeah, but some of those holidays are, are, what do I want to say? They're like, we get the day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, and that Friday off.
Yep.
So two of those twelve days are before Thanksgiving and after Thanksgiving.
That makes sense.
See, because there's nobody in school anyways.
Yep.
So that's why we get twelve, those are two more, and we don't get Veterans Day either.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you the days we get only because I was on the negotiation team for the, for the contract, so.
Absolutely.
So, so do we, do we need to take action on that now, to just name that, to take that floating holiday and call, move that to Martin Luther King Day and leave it there?
Well, I, you know, we did have a valid, uh, request a year ago about why Martin Luther King Junior Day was not our, one of our regular holidays in the state and at the federal level, and I think that that. I don't think that that should be even up for discussion, I just think that it should be. That's just my feeling. I think that's a, I think that's a federal holiday, and it needs to be in our. In our calendar of holidays.
But my question still stands, which is, are we going to replace the floating holiday with that day? So there's no floating holiday, it becomes Martin Luther King Day?
No, I don't know.
That's where this floating holiday came from.
Well, I, I think that that.
The floating holiday came from town meeting day being taken away.
Yeah.
Oh.
I think that that, I think that that, I think that escaped us, because quite frankly, I think, well, both the school went to school on Martin Luther King Day at some moment in time, because my wife said so, because what they did, they took the day to teach about him in the schools. That's what they did. So, but when it became more of a state and federal holiday, well, then they took the day off. But, but, um. I don't know how to answer your question, I like what Joey said, because quite frankly, I'm. I'm not sure how the holidays have been used in the past or whatever, because I haven't had very many. Forty-six years I've been on a holiday. But. I. I don't like, and I don't think the public's perception of it is very good either, when a holiday happens to fall by the calendar on a Friday. And the town in the past, or the school for that matter, takes off a couple of days before the actual holiday, because the workers of the world actually get the Friday off. So there's been, there, there have been a lot of feelings one way or another about, well, I'm getting the day off before Christmas just to get ready for Christmas to take off too. That's a courtesy, that, that to me is not a holiday. That's a courtesy that the town may or may not take. But the holiday of Christmas happens to be on December twenty-fifth, we can't control the calendar, it is what it is. In the, in the world, if it happens to be on a Saturday, and you didn't work on a Saturday, great, you didn't, you, you got it off. It wasn't that you got Friday off too, as well as the twenty-fifth. I don't know. We have, so do we need to make the calendar tonight of whatever the holidays are and the actual dates of them? I agree with Kelly, I, I, it does add to the confusion about this floating around to see who wants to. about this floating around to see who wants to vote because inevitably some people forget about it, including ourselves. So it is, it is, it is better to know than it is not know. And I think, do we need to establish, do we need to establish the calendar tonight?
Well, I think, I, I think I'd like to bring it back. You know, we have a staff meeting Thursday. I received some very good feedback tonight. You know, we, we got some feedback about Columbus Day, the floating holiday, you know, PTO, maybe get a little bit more feedback on Thursday and go from there.
Okay, so the year begins on July first, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so it's July first to June thirtieth, right? And so we have two more meetings, excuse me, in June to actually have a motion on table to assert the holidays for the financial year for the town of two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, correct?
Yep, but the whole personnel policy has to be approved at once.
Okay.
I did want to just clarify something. I was going to do it at the end of this, but we can, we can chat about it now. I've heard some, some discussion stating that policy and Weathersfield cannot be approved unless it gets three readings. And I looked at Vermont statutes and that only pertains to ordinances, not policies. And I couldn't find a policy that stated Weathersfield Select Board are required to have three readings. So I was wondering if anybody has any information on that because that would change. Well, I mean, I guess it really wouldn't matter because there's no, well, this fourth of July, but that's already approved.
Well, it would be three consecutive meetings because normally when you start a first reading on anything, they just continue. It gives opportunity that, that time space between the first reading to continue on to the second meeting for a second reading. And then absent of any changes at that second reading, the third reading more or less becomes almost what, what's going to be adopted. Because at the third meeting, I think any board has the right to actually make a motion to adopt the policy change. Because you've set up two meetings before to go over whatever the conversation you want to have. So if you're, I don't know where you were tonight with the, with the personnel policy. It says, it doesn't say discussion. It doesn't say first reading. It's, it's a, it's a conversation about what's in the personnel policy, right?
Yeah, but I, I just couldn't find anything that stated that three readings were required. But I'll, I'll check again tomorrow.
We don't have a town charter, so there are no, there is no definitive, like, here's what happens when you want to move a policy. It's, it's bad publicly. I can tell you that. If you, if you, if this board decided to change policy tonight after listening to a few comments, that's probably not a good idea. So.
So making like a motion to change the floating holiday to Martin Luther King Junior Day, it couldn't happen.
Well, my position on Martin Luther King, no, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to, I want to clarify my position. My position is Martin Luther Junior King Day is a holiday. I'm not going to use floating. I'm not going to use anything. It's a holiday for me. And I'm not going to vote any other way than to have it a holiday. So I, it is what it is for me.
So that's with or without?
We learned that from a year ago and I'm not, I'm not.
I agree with you.
I'm not going to make that mistake again.
I, I do have one other question though.
Take it ahead.
I, I see in, in the discussion that it mentions, I think under section four, under feedback, something about eight hours. Does it say anywhere in the policy specifically that a holiday, holiday pay or time off pay is based on an eight-hour workday? That needs to be clear if it's not.
I don't, I don't believe.
Because even in situations where people work ten hours, you get eight hours of paid debt time. So somewhere during that week, you work thirty-two hours.
Yep.
You get eight paid hours off.
I don't believe it currently says it, but we currently do that.
I, I just want to make sure we're not paying ten hours for a holiday.
Well, see, it's, it's different, you know, in the highway department, they work ten, four, uh, four days, ten hours a day. So in, on the town side, there's some employees that work different amounts of hours.
Okay, but it seems that we're going to have separate policies because they're in a different, we're handling it different anyway, so.
Yep.
We're not talking about that right now. We're talking about this.
Yep.
That, that's what I'm getting at.
But the problem is, no, you're on to something because the problem is there's going to, there may be a personnel policy that deals with the town, but underneath the town, you're going to have a different, you're going to have a different chapter on whatever you're talking about for, for workers in the workplace within the town, including the general fund or the highway fund. Because if, if that is different, the point that you just raised.
I'll, I'll, I'll take it to another level, Dave. We've, we've sort of been looking at elected positions that work in the town office and we've been dealing with whether or not they come under town policy and town direction, the town authority. There, there's been question. And so what would say that during the week of a holiday, they couldn't come in and say, well, I work ten-hour days this week, so I get, I'm going to put thirty hours in on three days and I want ten hours of holiday pay?
So it does say employees working under forty hours per week will receive leave pay for the number of hours in the employee's typical workday on which the holiday falls at the employee's regular rate of pay up to the amount that makes the employee whole and their normally scheduled work hours.
Okay, so there's.
I feel like that's.
Suzanne has her hand raised. Suzanne?
Yep. So the, the holiday leave phrase on page nineteen actually states that employees scheduled to work forty hours a week will receive a full day's pay, ten hours of pay for each qualifying holiday listed above. So it's talking about a forty-hour week employee would receive the equivalent of ten hours. And I, I, I think that would need to be changed to reflect the actual worked time on that regular scheduled day for that individual employee. Does it make sense? Some, some full-time employees might work ten hours a day, but others might work just, if it falls on a Friday, I just work four and a half hours on a Friday and not ten.
And, and, and actually, really quick, I just, really quick, Mr. Chairman, on that, that person that works only four on Friday should get the other four on Thursday. They should only have to work a half a day Thursday. And then they've got their full-time off. I, I, I was in that situation before.
Steve, you've had your hand up.
I wonder if your time is better spent not on the details of this. If you want to leave this to Brandon and Suzanne, and I'm always happy to throw my dollar and a half, whether, whether they want it or not. But there, there are complications to this. Let us try to come back to you with something. If you don't like it, reject it and we'll do it again. But the, the highway works for ten-hour days. The town now, we have a long Monday, then I think eight hours Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and a four-hour Friday. How do you make this fair for everybody? You've got to change some wording that's outdated. And I think if, I think we have a sense of, of some of what you're interested in. And let us work through the details and if you don't like what we come back with, tell us to change it.
Paul, I, I just, this is more of a personal comment and I apologize for this, but I'm, I, I'm having a hard time with a lot of what I hear is, well, historically, we've always done it this way. For thirty years, we've always done it this way. Well, we can't change. We've always done it this way. Myself personally, that doesn't fly. I don't care whether we've done it thirty years or not. I wish things would stay the same they were thirty years ago and it's not going to happen. So I'm sorry, that's just a personal opinion, but I hear that an awful lot. So.
I want to thank Steve for his comment. That was, that makes sense anyway.
Did, um, did you have anything else in, so we're, so we're kind of off the holiday pay thing. Does, does everybody, and we moved away from the holidays, right? Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there anything in the personnel policy more to, to this?
We'd like to add a section called lunch breaks. That's spelled out in the contract with the Weathersfield School and, and other personnel policies. The existing personnel policy does not address lunch breaks, so they've become different depending on the department as well. As mentioned previously, highway department would, would receive a thirty-minute paid lunch break. Some staff in Martin Memorial Hall receive the one-hour unpaid lunch break and then others receive the one-hour paid lunch break, forty-five minutes to an hour. So currently, we obtained feedback in the staff meeting and, and these are some of the comments that we received. The first is the reason for having the paid lunch breaks as a municipality is that people come in during lunch and ask for service. Historically, thirty-plus years, employees received a paid working lunch. The entire office would sit down and have conversations, community time, more than a paid lunch. The second was staggering lunch breaks will not work because each employee has specialized skills. If we stagger lunch breaks and a resident visits the office and that employee is not available because he or she is at lunch, another employee may not be able to assist that resident, resulting in a wasted trip for the resident. The third is if you want the office open and you want us available to serve the public, we should receive at least a thirty-minute paid working lunch. And the fourth is we need to treat all employees equally. So I think after, after having that staff meeting and discussing that with everybody, we all came to the agreement of a thirty-minute working lunch break. And basically what that would do is employees would sit down and have lunch. But if a resident comes in, and especially considering we're probably going to open our doors again pretty soon if, if approved, if a resident comes in on their lunch break and we can't assist them because somebody isn't present, then we'd have to turn that resident away. If Floanne clocked out and somebody came for a dog license or, or something, then they'd have to wait for the town clerk to clock back in for lunch. So basically that would allow them to, to serve, service that resident and, and, and be able to have a lunch.
I, you know, I, I think some of the requests, and you just pointed out one, some of the requests maybe from the public would have to do specifically with a task. So it may be easier for one department in the town to handle that request because they have a couple of people that may be knowledgeable about the subject matter. Whereas a dog license though, at least lately for the last year or so, since Ray's son left, would be difficult to serve. And I don't know if anybody else in the office is available to do a license if, if Floanne happened to be eating her food for that matter. I like what the fourth, what, what the comment was where, I think it was the fourth comment that you had on your list where it said, we want to treat all the staff equal. That's where I'm at. Because I've heard, I've heard from, from A to Z, we have new people that are hired that don't get paid for lunch. We have some that have been here for a very long time that happen to get an hour paid for lunch. And that's just a recipe for disaster on its face with time. So that doesn't treat people the same. And so I'm into listening to a program that will be the same for all. So that way, everybody that comes here to work, that you don't have to make twenty-seven different policies for, oh, you didn't come here, you, you started work on September first, therefore you don't qualify. All, all these little separate deals for people. That's bad. I did, one more note before I get to you, Paul. I did find it interesting that on these signed documents that we found a couple of weeks ago where there's a, there's a, all the people signed them, that they, that they're knowledgeable of the personnel policy and what, what it grants and doesn't grant. I recall seeing the person that does the books for the police department, that was a part-time person here that's working, that her, she acknowledged that she doesn't qualify for any of these things. I found that to be interesting, where we have a different signature page. So that didn't, that caught my eye where, where it's not the same for her, which is meaning that, that she's a part-time person and not getting the same as the other part-time people are in town. Paul? Just two things on the lunches. Personally, I'd like to see what the law states about paid lunches and not, not just a comment from someone. I'd like to actually see what, what the Vermont State statutes talk about from an appointment standpoint of what we can, what we can't and, and how that works. I personally have no problem if they want to, if this is, if this is how they feel and they want a thirty-minute lunch that's paid. But there is no employee that should be leaving the building under any circumstances to go get a sandwich down at the store and come back or anything if they're unpaid. Because they're totally under workman's comp. They fall and get hurt, they're going to, they're under workman's comp.
Or an accident or anything.
So, so, so you, you can't have your cake and eat it too. If you want to be paid employee, you're bagging your lunch, you're bringing it in here. That's, I mean, that's just my personal opinion. And I think that's, I mean, that's a law. I, I don't know how to get around that.
Well, also, if it's a paid working lunch, then the employee would be getting paid to stay in the building and service the public at the same time. And if they go get a sandwich, then they can clock out.
That, that's acceptable, but they're clocking out. Joe?
I think you ought to look into, as Paul said, the legality of a working lunch. I don't like, that being said, you have no way of proving that your people are getting a break
Right.
every four hours if you call it a working lunch. I think they either got to stop work or you, you've got to figure out a way to build in break time that you can prove they're having during the day. If you get audited, you're going to have trouble.
So, so yeah, so I, I, as a, as a recommendation, I, I would like to ask as a board member if you could have some information, not just you saying or somebody saying, well, we've done it this way for thirty years. I want to see a legal binding, how it works, what, what is the law? Right?
I know in the highway department, the guys have a thirty-minute paid lunch break. It's up to them to make sure they take it. I'm not there watching them, telling them to take the break. They're, they are entitled to a thirty-minute break and it's up to them to be responsible to take that thirty-minute break.
But you have no way of proving they're doing that. So if, I'm just saying, if we get audited.
It's on them to take that thirty-minute break. It's provided to them.
I, I like where, where Joe's going. If, if we get audited, we have no proof that the highway department workers actually clocked out and took a lunch.
They don't clock out and take a lunch. It's a paid lunch.
Right.
So they get paid to take a half an hour off and eat lunch. It's not a working, it's different where we are.
I see what you're saying.
But there needs to be.
And I'm not even sure, in fact, I know, I know this doesn't happen. Nobody's, nobody at the highway, and I don't even know about here in the office, but I don't think anybody's looking at, oh, oh, it's twelve oh oh and I'm off.
Right.
That, that's not happening.
Or they're not going back to shop to punch out.
I mean, they might be at a dump truck, at, at a red light for all I know at twelve oh oh. They're not, so they're not eating at the same time at any time. And I don't think that's happening here either. Somebody may be hungry at eleven-thirty and frankly, they're going to go get lunch. I don't know. Steve?
And what's happened in the office, and it's happened for thirty years and I, I, fully with you, Paul. Does it, all that does is it informs us as to why things were the way they were or are the way they are. Things change all the time. But it's about being open for the public. It's about, so the requirement is you, you are on call during your lunch. You can, you don't leave the building for lunch. Yes, it is true. Usually a person goes to the market and picks up some lunch for people. But you, you eat lunch there and if nobody happens to come in, which is pretty much the situation now with COVID, but it won't be shortly when we reopen, somebody comes in, needs to see a lister, the treasurer, whatever, you, you're on the clock and you go do it. And then when they leave, you go back and maybe do the next ten minutes of your lunch before somebody else comes in. It's not, it's about being available so that if the only break you have in the day is your lunchtime and you come into the office, it's not like, well, Steve's out for lunch, you'll have to come back and you can't come back because you got to be back to work.
Did, somebody had their hand up over here again?
Suzanne has her.
Just a minute. Who, who had up over here first?
Well, I, I've got a few things. Part-time individuals working five hours on any given day. I, I think the law requires a half an hour break for lunch. I think the law requires a half an hour break for lunch if you work a five-hour day, right?
I think it's six.
Six?
Six.
Well, you have, every four hours, you have to have a break.
A fifteen-minute break.
Minimum four hours, you gotta have a break. So what I'm getting at is, what if a part-time employee was working a full day? See, I guess where my question's coming from is, is I'm looking at saying, okay, what about a paid thirty-minute lunch break for all full-time employees? But then, what if you've got a part-time person that works three full days a week? Then that person's working a full day, so now you're back to basing it off the hours they put in on a day. But it's a full day. Can anybody give me any suggestions or idea what type of abuses we might see from this, from paid lunches? And I'm not suggesting that there are, I'm just asking what, what could there be?
Abuses?
Yes.
Like as in, people abusing the length of time that they use to have lunch? Or what do you mean by abuse?
Well, if I, if I worked five hours today, but I choose to come in at, let's say I come to work at eleven o'clock, do I get lunch at noon? Is that appropriate?
It's not currently spelled out in the personnel policy, and there's no lunch, there's no lunch policy, so.
So would it be better said in here that you get, you get a lunch break after five hours of work? Or after four hours of work, you get your break? You, you, does that make sense? You don't get to come in at eleven o'clock and take lunch at noon.
Yeah. After four hours of work, you get a fifteen-minute break. After six hours of work, you get a thirty-minute lunch.
Okay. I think the meals have to be scheduled around the normal time for a meal. The key is that you work six hours. Let me take me for example, and maybe, I work two five-hour days. I'm not technically entitled to a lunch break. So anybody who's scheduled to work six or more hours, a shift of six or more hours, is entitled to a meal break. So if I come in at eleven and work until five, I'm entitled to a meal break. Now, if that meal break, if I want to take my meal break at noon because that's customary lunchtime, fine. I'm still there until five. So the policy could be, or the policy could be written so that anybody with a schedule of at least six hours, and if I work a six-hour day and three, three-hour days, I'm only getting the lunch break on the six-hour day. If you work, if your schedule is less than six hours a day, you can still provide people with a meal break, but you don't have to by law.
Hold on, Paul, just a minute.
Suzanne wants.
Suzanne's, she asked before, so, go ahead, Suzanne.
Oh, I wanted to circle back to what Joey said. If we have to provide a lunch break by law, it doesn't matter if it's paid or unpaid, but if it's paid and it's a working lunch, the Department of Labor provides, it's called a lunch waiver, where the employee signs off that they will be working through their lunch and they will be getting paid. And there's a form available for that. But that might be a good idea for the town to be on the safe side because basically, if they work through their lunch, they work all the time and they don't get a break.
They can't leave the facility either, they're in that kind of situation.
Paul?
I just, I'm gonna go back to what Steve said. I think we're talking details and, and no disrespect to anybody, unless you're a labor lawyer. I, I, I mean, anybody can read something or say that we've been doing it this way. I want to see what the rules are in front of me. The closest one would be Suzanne, probably because she's actually been through as a human resource person. But that's all I want to see. And I have all the confidence that the people that are working here are gonna decide what's best for the public and what's best for them, and work with Brandon too. And I would just recommend coming to us with a proposal, and like Steve said, we're either gonna, we're gonna look at it and like it or not. I would, with that proposal, though, I'd like to see backed up what we're deciding to do based on what the state statute is for labor laws. So that way, there's none, there's none of this, I just, where there's too much, too many people think that they're maybe the experts on it. I'm not, so.
No, I'm not gonna say that I'm an expert either, but what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing too much, for me, I'm hearing too much confusion and someone trying to track time about somebody may, may get it, somebody may not get it. For me, simple is better. And right now, simple to me means that anybody working in the office, and you can set the bar on however you want to do it, on fifteen hours a week or something like that, is going to get a fifth, a thirty-minute paid lunch or something like that. Whatever we're gonna agree on, I think we should agree on something that's together, not separate and stifle off to different things, so that somebody doesn't have to keep track of this. That's, really, that's bizarre. So, and I appreciate whatever that I'm hearing, either from Paul or Brandon, when they're saying, "No, there's really nothing now, and that's not good either." So what ought to come out of this is a common denominator, so nobody has to check on anybody anymore, and, "Oh, you get lunch and you don't." No, 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 that's all over, those days are gone. And I think we can work out something to come on the, hopefully, by July first on the new year, so we don't have to break into a year and make everybody upset, or, I don't know. I just think, I think it's easier, something, you're gonna create a paperwork nightmare to keep track of things.
I think they've already come, I mean, Brandon talked to them, and they've come to a lot of agreement already, so.
Or at least, you've combined some things, right? You've taken the comments and you've tried to mold them together into something.
Thirty-minute paid lunch break.
Are there any other comments on this? I think we've, Ray?
In the past, we get our scheduled break the first of the year. So you're gonna change it to July now?
Oh, I don't know. Is that what happens on a calendar year?
Yeah.
It's a calendar year?
Spend the case. So give you more time. I think maybe this year, the vacation, the holidays were only announced through June.
Right.
So maybe just pump, just announce the rest of them for the balance of this year. It gives you some extra time to make the decision.
Yeah, I don't know. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to say, before we get off personnel policy, we wanted to look at the opt-out program as well. And if we're gonna approve it, we have to do it all at once, so we're gonna have to include that.
Is that, is that in that too, Brandon?
Yep, I'll add it to the next one.
To the next?
To the next meeting under the personnel policy, and we'll discuss it at the staff meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Any other comments on the personnel policy? Is that the last section that you had to deal with?
There is the vacation section.
The what?
The vacation section within the personnel policy.
Vacation.
The Select Board has already approved it, so we're just gonna include those changes in the personnel policy when the Board adopts it as a whole. So it's just, it's in there, but we've already discussed it.
And I haven't paid close attention to the changes, but, but as a rule, in the past, and I know that we're comparing what's happened thirty years ago, which is not fair, but I think you can make this blanket statement. We have encouraged employees who get vacation to use the vacation and don't trade it in for money. Having said that, we have traded in for money. But we've, in the last, at least a couple of years, that we have made an amendment here at this table, at least, I recall waiving the policy to do this, to inform particularly department heads that if they didn't use it, they were going to lose it. So we were trying to force them to use the vacation, which is well-earned and use it. But we did not just automatically transfer it to the next year. So we're trying to let all of the department heads particularly use the vacation that's allotted to them, or in the, in the year, they would lose it. So the carrying over days were getting diminished so that we wouldn't end up with somebody on the books that had thirty-seven weeks of vacation built up. Now, the school's doing the very same thing with sick days and all these other things as well, so.
Paul? Just on that vacation note quickly, I mean, you can set a cap. So these numbers are gonna sound very outrageous here, but where I work, it's a four-hundred-hour cap. You, your time just rolls over if you don't use it year to year, and it's a four-hundred hours, you just, you don't get any more.
Right.
So it just, you know, goes over, but.
I'm almost sure the school did that with the sick days, they had the cap. I don't think-
A hundred, a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five to eighteen.
I don't mind letting people roll some over to another year. I mean, there might be one year where they're just, you know, it just is what it is, and, you know, but, but there should be a cap, that's all.
We have a cap.
Okay, well, it wasn't stated that way, but, yeah.
Mr. Paul?
I brought this up before, and I want to make sure that, because this is the place that I think this gets dealt with, is in the personnel policy, and that is that if you're paid as an employee of this town, whether you're hired, elected, or appointed, and that, I mean, I guess, the appointed thing probably is, I mean, people appointed to boards don't get anything, so. But anyway, somehow it states in here or covers the fact that anybody that's a paid employee comes under this policy, regardless of how you became an employee, whether you're hired or elected or appointed. You, you, as an employee of the town, you accept this policy and do that in writing, and we saw that that has been happening in the past. But is there language in here that, that addresses that, that makes that clear?
Well, I mean, for example, Suzanne can violate the personnel policy and then be disciplined in writing. She could be terminated from her employment. But if you're elected, you can't be terminated unless you have a-
Well, I wasn't necessarily talking about termination, but I was talking about some kind of a discipline.
So I don't think that, I don't know how you would enforce it.
But they're employees, they have to follow the policy.
Well, there are, yeah, but there are, I get that, but there are different ways to handle all the business in the town, whether you're elected, including the Board. I mean, you could diminish this Board's role down. It would take the voters to approve that, but, but I'm pretty sure that you could. I mean, we, we developed, back in the day, back in nineteen seventy-four, we went from a Board to a Town Manager style of government. I mean, that's different. The Town Manager has the day-to-day operations under their jurisdiction, where before it was, the Board had it all. So there are ways that the Board can handle the business of the town and either expand the role of an elected official or not. That's just a fact. So I don't know the answer to what, where you were going, but I just, but there are options.
It would just have to be a different disciplinary action should an elected official violate the personnel policy, similar to how an appointed official would fall under disciplinary action if they violate the personnel policy.
I guess it depends on the violation, right? Because obviously, the VLCT would have something. I mean, every year, you see a public official that's embezzled funds. That's a criminal offense. So even though they're elected, there's a different, there's a different consequence. Ultimately, I can tell you that the, the, the elected officials in our town and most in any town come under the watch of the voters. They can either elect you or choose not to. Yes.
I just want to point out that this personnel policy is not just about discipline. It's kind of a roadmap and an existence of a job and your rights in the job. We're talking about lunch breaks and stuff. It's not all, it's not necessarily discipline, but it has to, everybody has to understand that what's in here applies to everyone, regardless of how you became an employee. That's all I'm trying to say.
No, no, I get, so, yeah, you're trying to quantify the workday. Yeah, no, I get you now. Okay, yeah, you're right, it's not gonna do with discipline, it's got to do with the order of the office.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Any other questions?
Potentially gets messy. It's all about goodwill, and you hope that whether you're elected, appointed, whatever, you're all gonna work together, and you're gonna have common ground, common understanding. And I guess, you know, as an elected treasurer, I guess there are things I can do that if I were an employee would get me disciplined or whatever, that probably you can't do anything to me as the treasurer, as long as I don't run away with money or, you know, some of those other criminal things. And I guess I can, you know, I could flaunt certain pieces of the policy. I guess it doesn't apply to me because I work ten hours a week, but anyway, whatever. But, you know, I can flaunt certain things because I'm an elected official that's more hassle. Why bother? But.
Well, again, you're back to discipline, and I'm really talking about, you know, the policy applies to everybody.
I'm gonna take that damn paid lunch break whether you give it to me or not.
I'll come buy you lunch.
But the only, but the only, and we've heard it before because we just went through the budget process, the only recourse that the Board has is to tell the treasurer that we were only paying him for one hour a week.
Right, use up my salary.
That's it.
Unless I want to have a, I can opt to have a special article. So the voters will give me that hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I really deserve.
Perfect. Need a secretary?
Yes, yes. Any other questions? Is that it now for the personnel policy?
Yep, that's it.
Good. Now we can move on to the work-at-home policy.
So this is just briefly, there's a work, there's a telecommuting policy in the packet. We held a staff meeting on May eleventh, we discussed this policy, and we received some comments. The first con, comment was differentiate between hourly and salaried employees. Differentiate between short-term and long-term arrangements and define the length of time for each. The severability clause requires additional language, an easier approval process, and simplify the language within the policy. So we've taken those things into consideration. I haven't had much time to modify the telecommuting policy since we met. So I guess, at this point, if the Select Board has read the telecommuting policy, we'd like to get some feedback on how you feel about it, and then we'll take that feedback to the meeting on Thursday of this week and discuss back and forth.
You said telecommuting policy, but it's really the work-at-home, is that?
It's, it's the same thing.
Okay.
It's just what VLCT calls it, so we changed the name to telecommuting.
Okay. I just want to lay this out first. So, so how this, I think, evolved was obviously through COVID-nineteen, where the office was shut down, and we had a dramatic shift in, from the office work to keep the business of the town operational and to, to provide all those people with the equipment necessary to work at home, including whatever Brandon did to pull it off. I mean, he, he got the grant to give everybody the laptops, the capability to do it, and they're a tool that can be used from now and into the future. I don't know what's gonna happen when they start having issues because, you know, it's gonna be an expense that we weren't prepared for. Having said that, I liked the comment that Steve made earlier about really what lunch was about. And I've made this comment-
That's where I was going. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And I've made this comment before, that we're all here to serve the public. And having said that, and, but we're working on the capability to make, and I know that there's a grant, I think, that we just received, or it's quite possibly part of the Aqua funds, or I'm not sure yet, to digitalize more and more of our records where it'll be accessible from everyone, including every homeowner, to be able to access their own deeds and records through the computer. But I think, as a general rule, my position would be that if you're working for the town, you've got to be here during the workday. Now, is there gonna be circumstances where, where you may be not able to do it? Or I don't, I'm not sure whether it's a medical thing, but I think you might have to take that up under a leave situation. Or to notice the Town Manager that you're not capable, at least in some, or Suzanne, who's the HR person, that you're not capable of coming in, maybe you've got an injury, I'm not sure where, where things may be able to work out that way. I'm not sure. But I, but my position is, as a, in a general sense of things, that this whole past year was exacerbated by COVID-nineteen and the need to stay out of the office and then to continue the business. So are there any comments about this? I know you had your hand up for it, so Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I just think that this should be taken up on a case-by-case basis by you, Brandon, honestly. An easier approval process is gonna make it easier to- Um, an easier approval process is going to make it easier to abuse this and make it commonplace for people to want to work at home. It's natural. Everybody would love to do that, I'm sure. Um, Paul wouldn't, but generally speaking, if given the opportunity, people will work from home. And the easier you make it for them to do that, the more they're going to do that. And I also see a little bit of, kind of, it doesn't make sense to saying we have to have a working lunch, but yeah, I want to work from home. This doesn't add up. For me, I would say, take this up on a case-by-case basis and throw this in the trash. Just want to be honest about it.
Paul, how does that end up first?
Yeah, no, there, there are some circumstances when, you know, somebody's laid up something and you just can't get in and, and, you know, that, like I said, a case-by-case basis, but it goes right back to exactly what Steve said. Um, and I, I wish I could know the exact words so I could quote it, but um, we're here for the town. We're here for the people. If you're at home, you can't be here for the people. So um, you know, um, you, you, you work from here. I mean, if your lunches are interrupted, then, 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 you know, training might be interrupted, uh, you know, who knows? Um, so it's uh, it needs to be here.
I do just want to say that there was a very easy approval process in place already. Um, you filled out a work at home approval form. And basically what I was looking for was just some kind of accountability. Um, so some kind of a report to explain what, you know, what kind of work did you do for the amount of hours that you've put on your time card. Um, but that did turn into it not being used. So that was one of the reasons why we were putting forth this policy.
Did you have a question, Ray?
I just had a comment on one of the things that was discussed during that meeting was um, if the power's out at this building, if it's a really bad snow day, if the store's backed up and the building's closed, people want to know if there's a policy in place where they can just work at home. And that'd be, that's, that's why they kind of wanted a policy. They want to make sure that they're still able to help people, even if it's at their own helm. If, if this building, you know, that, that's the kind of thing you're thinking about.
There were a couple of days over the, over the past year where the weather was, was really bad. We got hit with a lot of snow. Um, and some of us weren't able to make it into the office. So under those circumstances, an approval process that would allow for accountability for employees, but also allow for employees to work at home. There's one thing COVID taught us and, and that is, you know, we can, some of us really can do some work from home. So why lose out on a full day of work because of, of the weather? Um, if we can work from home. I think it's really simple to ask for some kind of accountability, some kind of a report. Um, and, and if you do work from home, what does that communication look like? When do you check in and so forth? Um, so I think a simpler policy. Um, we did take a lot of this, most of this policy from VLCT. Um, and, and then we, we tried to tailor it to our situation and it, and it did become pretty long. Um, and we, we recognize that and plan on revising it. Um, but unless the select board decides to throw out the policy, it's up, it's up to you.
Well, I'm kind, I'm kind of agreeing with Joey a little bit, where s- where s- a little shorter is better. And one of the things that I just thought of when you were talking was that if, if you're working at home, and I did, you did copy me on the emails, a couple of those snowstorms, where you advised the staff that they were, that it was okay to work from home. And you took that initiative to do that. And there was all the staff that got that. Um, that's not the highway because they're out.
Yeah.
They're out plowing, so you can't, so you can't come in.
It's nice when the parking lot's empty during a snowstorm.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but having said that, I mean, I, you know, the, 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 the teeth in that is, if, if you, if, I guess, the policy would say, if you don't, then, then you're not going to be on the payroll. So there needs to be a consequence for not doing that. So if you, if I work for you and I say that I'm working for home and you say, well, I don't think that's a good idea. And I say, I'm going to work at home anyway, you're going to have to tell me, okay, Dave, you can do all your work you want at home, but I'm not paying you. Got to be something. Now I'm like.
Um, well, this comes back to, you know, the personnel policy. Um, is this, is this attached to the personnel policy? Or is there a statement in the personnel policy that it says, regardless of your course of employment, um, you're accepting this policy? You know, who does it, exactly what Dave was just saying. Uh, I'm elected. You can't tell me I'm, I'm, I'm using that term. You can't tell me I can't work at home. I'm elected. Yeah, see, I mean.
Usually it would just be.
And I'm eating lunch.
We're not going to pay you.
There you go.
Paul, go ahead, Paul.
Just whatever we come up with for a policy, um, I think there should be something in place. Um, but from the way, uh, the way I think it should work though, is we need, we need to know who's going to approve that. Um, is that solely you? Is it you and human resources? Um, currently, and I, the only thing I can use for an example is my own employment, um, which is one of the largest employed, employment companies in the upper valley too. So um, you have to have a manager approve it, um, if, if something comes up, you need to work from home. And you also have to have a human resource approve it, at least at my company. Um, that way it's not solely one person too. And then, and of course, if it's to that level of you need to work from home, human resources is probably going to be involved anyways with whatever else that, that's going on. Um, snow days are one thing, you know, that, that kind of thing. Um, but this is going to be one of those policies, going to be really hard for, uh, you know, everybody's talking about, we want the same thing. We want fair across the board and we want a thirty-minute lunch across the board type thing. This is not going to be that kind of policy. And I don't see how it could, because the highway, how, how's the highway guy going to work from home? Uh, it's not going to. Um, you know, it makes perfect sense to the town manager, uh, you know, maybe the treasurer, if he's got access to get, you know, internet in here, that he, you know, they can do stuff um, of that nature. You know, so that's going to be depending upon the job position. Um, and just as, as a, as a follow-up on that, even during COVID, um, we sent people home at my company. I know this place was shut down. Some of the employees still came in here, but um, I was considered an essential worker and I was not an office person. I worked in a lab. I, I, my stuff's there. I can't do it from home. I had to go in every day too, um, even through COVID. That's, that's regardless of a snowstorm, that's regardless of whatever. Um, you know, I, I, nobody wants to travel in the snow and that's perfectly fine. I, I think Brandon should have the discretion that he needs from an office manager to say, okay, the, yeah, today's the day. Go ahead. I don't, we don't need to get involved with that, so.
I think, no, I think we're repeating ourselves.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that we should let Brandon talk with the staff again to go over this again, another thing. So I think we're, I think we're running in circles here and everybody's kind of invariably saying the same thing. And I just, I want to move on.
Yep.
So.
I have one final question.
You've got the gist of it. We understand that highway is different than whatever else is going on, so.
One final question.
Okay.
Long-term working from home. Employees working from home for a long period of time. Like forever. Would that ever be acceptable? Just so we can rule it out. Okay.
How do, how does that provide customer service?
I've received a request. That's why I was.
The only way that could work would be, I guess, would be like a contracted person, but not under your, you know, if you had a contracted, then they're not in this office anyway. Whatever, you know, and I don't know, I don't know what example that would be, but it's a contracted service, right?
What a town official.
It would be separate away from what, what you're monitoring, whatever the work that was doing. So if you, if you contract labor, or if, or if Ray contracts a job and subs it, I mean, they're not on site. But I can't imagine any other way.
Do you, do you want to trust your town manager in those situations? Or do you want a policy that says, work at home longer than X months or X weeks requires select board approval?
What was that?
Shouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I, I don't know. I don't know how to answer that.
I think this policy here is generally designed around short-term.
It's, it's generally exactly that, but we need to differentiate between long-term and short-term.
That's what Steve's pointing out.
Well, I just, I mean, just trying to gauge how we write the policy. Do you, you're going to trust the town manager to make the wise decision? And then, and maybe allow somebody to work at home for six months or six years if the circumstances permit? Or do you want to say, you've got the right, you, you've got the, the responsibility for doing this up to six months? After that, we got to approve it.
I think six months is still pretty long. I think anything over.
Well, I was just using that as an example. Do you, you, if it goes beyond a certain window of time, do you want to be able to register in and say yes or no?
Joe.
We trust Brandon with a lot in this town. And I am pretty confident that he can handle this on a case-by-case without us needing to be involved at all. You've got a good head. You know what's right from wrong. I don't see why we're even talking about this, honestly.
I think we need a window though, in a policy.
I, I, I would say so too, and, and it's, the, this is one of those situations where you have to take Brandon's name out of the discussion.
No, right.
It's the town manager. He may not be the town manager five years from now with the same policy in place. And now.
And I hate to throw a monkey wrench in it, but to me, it would differentiate greatly between somebody that was under his employment and then an elected official. Are we talking about allowing an elected official to work at home for six months or a year or seven years?
Appointed or elected, any.
Well, no, there's a difference. Because, because elected officials, regardless of our joking around tonight, are accountable to the voters, unless you go to a criminal offense. Appointed or hired personnel are under the management. So, so there is a difference. There's a big difference. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not into having it in the policy, nor I'm not into granting the town manager the authority to let a person work from home for six months or six, I don't know. And here's why. The public is very keen on perception. I run into people that come to me all the time with surprises that I don't like. Hey, did, hey, hey, did you know that the town did this? And I'll say, no, I didn't know that. And, and I feel embarrassed to admit that I didn't know something important, what the town did. This would be one of those other events. Hey, did you know that Charlie was working at home for six months? And I'll say, no, I didn't know Charlie was working for the town. So, so I, I don't like granting the, that approval at all. And I want to stick closer to the conversation, which is if you work for the town and you actually volunteered to sign that agreement to work for the town, you're working for the town in the town where the town says that you're working. We do that to Brandon. We tell him he's got to be in the office.
But I, but, but I do, if I may, I, I do trust the town manager, this one, to, to make decisions that Ray had pointed out earlier. You know, that occasionally there's, there's a situation and it's, it just makes sense that it, that it's okay for a day.
I'm confused. I, I don't want to go down the road, Ray.
I don't mean to reinvent the whole wheel here, but um, do other towns even have policies that cover their elected officials? Is that a common thing? Or is it a totally different policy?
I think it's generic and we've already gone over it, where the, the elected officials in any town come under the umbrella, well, they are elected by the people. Having said that, the legislative body, which is any board, determine the budget about the expenses spent on each department. So that's the.
I guess I'm talking about personnel policy. Do other towns have personnel policies?
Well, yeah, they do, because they come under the umbrella of holidays and, you know, vacations and things. So they do.
You have full-time elected officials and there's an expectation, I guess, that they're going to get some kind of benefits.
Yep.
And they would go according to the other people. Then you've got part-timers who don't get much of anything. Shouldn't get much of anything.
Yep.
Except for me.
So I guess the answer is it depends.
I was just curious.
I, I just stumbled onto something else in this policy that would really feed into this six-month thing.
I was trying to wind this up.
I know you were, but, but, but it says, the equipment and services, the cost of technology required for the employee to perform their primary work responsibility is determined and covered by the employer. So what, that means we got to buy somebody a, a, a computer or?
Or internet service.
No, internet services employee, that says that, Wi-Fi. Well, it says Wi-Fi is their.
But if you, yeah, but if you had all kinds of, if you had all kinds of needs that you would hold to that policy and you wanted to work from home and then somebody says they granted a six-month work from home, there you go, the slippery slope. I need, I need a car.
Absolutely.
No, no, really. People will ask, people inevitably will ask for their power bill to be subsidized, their heat, they're like, you know, everything. Trust me.
Yes.
X-nick.
Ouch.
Okay, we're moving on.
All right, let's do it.
We're moving on to the solid waste bids. I shut my computer off because I'm too stupid. Um, we have two bids for, help me out, Brandon. It was for the, is it for the compactor or is it for recycling?
Compactor.
So the solid waste.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve.
The solid waste district advertised an RFP for solid waste services in February of this year. Um, bids were due on March twenty-fifth at three PM. After a public bid opening took place, the executive committee held a meeting to review the bids. Um, towns that have a transfer station within the district include Rockingham, Springfield, Weathersfield, Cavendish and Ludlow. Casella Waste was the lower bidder in Rockingham, Cavendish and Ludlow. And Alva was the lower bidder in Weathersfield and Springfield. Um, and each of these respective transfer stations serve other towns as well. In our case, it's West Windsor and Reading. Um, in Springfield's case, it's uh, who else do they serve?
Chester.
Chester.
Chester and Andover, right?
Andover. Springfield's Andover, yeah.
In the past, Casella was the only company that bid on solid waste services within the district. Um, so basically the company had a monopoly on, on our district. As a local, uh, as a local small business based out of Springfield, Alva Waste continued to develop itself to be able to bid on this contract against a solid waste giant like Casella. Um, last, last year, the town of Weathersfield advertised an RFP for a recycling contract. Alva Waste competed against Casella and came in as the low bidder for recycling services in Weathersfield. Uh, the select board voted to award the recycling contract to Alva Waste. Um, so we do have experience working with Alva Waste and I, I don't believe that there's any complaints. Do you have any complaints, Ray?
No.
Um, so Alva Waste is the low bidder in Weathersfield, again, for solid waste services. And the annual escalator Alva Waste is charging is a quarter of a percent less than Casella. Um, I've, I've prepared a comparison for, for all of you. It's, it's right in front of you. It's the eleven by fourteen. Um, and that basically shows the breakdown. In the past, the solid waste district never had competition on solid waste services. So whoever won, whoever submitted the bid would just win the contract. Um, but this year, Alva Waste came in, they sharpened their pencil. Um, and, and they came in as the low bidder in Weathersfield and Springfield. Um, I've been talking to Jeff Mobus, the town manager over in Springfield, pretty regularly. Um, and they've decided to move forward with Alva Waste and not move forward with, with, with the district.
Hold on. You think they're going to leave the district?
No, we're going to stay in the district.
That's not, that's not.
You don't have to, you don't have to go to the bid. If they award the contract to Casella, we don't have to go to Casella automatically as our own entity.
I misunderstood.
Yeah.
It's a group and you're supposed to.
Get together. We, we, we pay the district.
To go to their contract.
We pay the district money to try to get us a better price.
Okay.
So, so basically, you know, in an effort not to have a monopoly, to have competition, to ensure that all, all towns that obtain solid waste services get the best price, we think that it's good to have competition. Um, if no towns move forward with one or the other, then one or the other is out. Um, in this case, that would probably be Alva Waste. Um, so I think based on Alva Waste coming in as the low bidder, um, and based on Alva Waste having a lower annual escalator by a quarter of a percent, um, it would be in the best interest of our town to move forward with, with Alva Waste.
As?
For solid waste services.
The, the compactor?
C and D of trash.
Yep.
So they've bid, uh, my screen's out, so I didn't, I don't see anything. So, so I just want to be clear, because I, I agree with you up to a point. I'm not concerned about some big company or some little guy that I want to give a chance, regardless of who the names were thrown around. A bid's a bid's a bid. And if you go through the bid process and all things being equal, um, then that's why we have the bid. And we need to adhere to the process of the bid.
Yep.
So if you're saying. So if you're saying to me that Alva is lower in the bid and all bids are equal, then I'm okay with that. Now, having said that, have I heard some, have I heard some good comments about, for instance, on weekends and about availability, about one, you know, a vendor that is handling our recycling, who happens to be Alva? Yes, I've heard that. Should it be a factor in the other bid? No, for me. Because, because a bid's a bid's a bid. And so I guess that's all I have to say about it. So I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to go down the road of, wait a minute, we need to spread it out and we need to give it to a little guy or whatever. I mean, because other haulers do have, there are other people that I've seen lots of trucks on the road, and they go into these depots, either Casella or Alva's, and they could have bid, but they chose not to for one reason or another. Maybe they don't have the capability. Yep. Paul?
I make a motion that we accept Alva Waste as our solid waste and C and D company.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to, just a second, I'm going to have the, I'm going to have the motion be on the table before discussion. Motion made and seconded to award the bid for C and D and for the compactor, which is the waste to Alva Waste Management. Now, discussion. Yes, Mr. Todd.
Currently, Casella is doing our compactor service, right?
Right, yes.
So do we have the, where does the, the big thing?
Compactor.
Roll-off. Yeah, where does that come from? Is that Casella's? Is that ours? Do we need to, do we need to make any investment in infrastructure here? You know, or are we straight up with the bid? That's what I'm trying to get at, I guess.
So we did reach out to Alva, and they have ordered 200 containers for the district. Ray, do you want to add anything into this?
Technically, we own the trash compactor. We ran into the same problem. We ran into the same problem when we got rid of the zero stream, single stream.
Uh huh.
They, it was never docked, it was never cleared. So we didn't own the compactor, but Alva's already remedied that by buying a whole bunch of compactors.
No, 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 the roll-offs.
Containers.
Yes, yes. So we, no, yeah, let's get our language.
We're supposed to own that trash compact container. It's supposed to be ours, and it gets put in the system and rotated. Where it gets murky through regional planning, because they're the ones that had set it up through solid ways, is did we buy it just to put it in the system, and it's not really ours? Or did we buy it that's supposed to be ours? And God knows where it is, coming, it's in the cycle. They come with an empty one and grab a new one. Right now, Alva, when they took over for the zero stream, single stream, they put a Weathersfield decal right on our compactor. There's some weeks that that's not there. We have a different compactor there.
It's not a compactor, though.
Sorry.
Container.
All right. Roll-off container.
Yep.
For the compactor. It has our sticker on it. It's in the system. He might bring a new one that doesn't have a decal.
So we're not going to have to buy any roll-offs or anything like that?
That would.
I don't believe that we're going to have to buy one. We might have to lease one.
And that changes, would that change? Or would, I mean, if we went with Casella, does that change their number? If we went with Alva, does that change their number? What are we talking about?
We can't really, I mean, yes, right now, I'd need more information. I'm not 100% sure.
The roll-offs, the bodies are $7,000 at a minimum, and I'm going to tell you, they're going north because of steel. So I would not be, you know, I'm not going to speculate, but I would not be surprised whether they're going to be touching off at 8,000 or 10,000 before too long. They're, you know, they're 20 yards or whatever they are, and they, they've got to be all there because they've got to meet DOT specs and everything to be on the road.
Do you want me to find out real quick? Okay, give me one second.
I remember, we were on a conversation with Alva, and they stated about that they did purchase more bins. I do have a question for Ray, though, the actual trash compactor. Is that ours?
Correct.
That is ours.
That's ours. The compactors are ours. I'm a bit confused as compactors, containers.
Right, but the compactor, and we have documentation to state that that compactor is ours?
We bought it. It's ours.
All right, because it seems like in the district meeting, Casella made a comment that it wasn't.
No, they're wrong. It's ours.
All right, I just want to make sure we get documentation for it.
We paid for it.
I could have been mistaken.
They might be saying the container is not.
Well, that's the thing. It might be this communication with what's what, so. Thank you.
Yep.
There was, just for the record, when, I don't know where it is, because I guess it's not here. And it's, so for us to gather our thoughts and to pay attention, and if we did buy a container, and that's what they are, the 20-yard roll-offs, it might pay to paint ours pink or I don't know what, and have great big signs that says Weathersfield on it.
Again, when Alva took over for the single stream, they put our decal.
Well, I don't even want to know the decal. I want it a lot clearer than that, going like 911 Weathersfield, okay? So then, so then we know all the way around, guess whose it is. See, the reason I say that is because when the Clamont Solid Waste, Newport Clamont Solid Waste facility shut down, we did own a compactor, and it was brand new, and it got to the Wyndham.
Container?
The container.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we've never not owned the compactor. We're going back to the days of after we went from a landfill to a, to a removal facility. We have always owned the motorized compactor. It's never been.
The one we have now, we bought used 15 years ago.
So I'm talking about only containers. And the containers, we did own one, and it was about $7,000, and it went when we, when the Newport Clamont facility shut down and we joined the Wyndham County Solid Waste, where George Murray was. We did put that in the rotation. Now, apparently, that's been gifted to somebody else that we don't know about.
Exactly, so we need, to me, going forward, it needs to be documented that we bought one, and it's our container. It's not getting added to the rotation.
To answer your question, to answer your question, as a business decision, I don't know how many people go to the transfer station. I don't go very often. Happened to go a week or two ago, and it may be very good business for us to own one because of the times where we would actually, it would actually pay for itself over time. Because I don't know whether any of you other have been at the same time I've been at, but on the weekends, and there have been some, where a container will be full, and then what happens is all of our nice friends that bring rubbish in throw it all on the ground, making lots of work for everybody.
I have an agreement right now where an open top shows up, and they'll bring it right up.
But I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not opposed to having another roll-off for our town on standby.
Is that irregardless of?
Yes, yeah, for me.
The issue with the roll-off closing container is you have to pull the one that's full out, put the empty one in, and that's overtime. So with an open top showing up, we can just throw it in the top of the open top for the day and not have to pay people to come in and change containers.
Yeah, all I'm trying to do is make it less work on us when we happen to have residents come in, and then one of them's full, and for some reason or another, it can't be removed. So the two guys there, the two poor guys that are there on like Monday morning, they're waking up saying, geez, I've got to start my week by picking up all this trash and throwing it in the container that should have been available for me before. It's happened before. That's all. I'm trying to head off on, it's almost like insurance. Did you find something out?
Yep, so the container roll-off is at no cost, and the compactor is ours. So we're all set there.
Okay. Did you have a question, Mike?
No.
No?
There's a motion on the floor to accept the bid for C and D disposal and for the compactor disposal. When is that date affected? July 1st?
July 1st.
So it's coming right up.
Yep.
Everybody understand it? And Alva, to accept it to Alva, so Alva, without me skimming through any more documents, Alva was the lowest bidder.
Yes.
And all things being equal, they met the deadline, the documents were sealed, there was a witness, right? I think Floanne did it.
No, it's gone through the.
Gone through the district.
District.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next up is the 1879 Schoolhouse. In your packet, we had an RFP go out for, we had a grant that came in, and Brandon must have worked with Matt Kenniston to go over the work on the 1879 building, and there were two bids. And if you read through your packet, one bid is significantly lower than the other. And my comment is, obviously, we're going to make a motion to be the lower bid, but I certainly hope that the materials that are factored in here and the labor or whatever, the whole, the whole project is, is not going to have a change of use or something and get the surprise. I hope that they've been.
According to Matt Kenniston, he vetted both, both of the proposals that we received. And he states that both companies understood the scope of work in the RFP.
And they have submitted a certificate of insurance?
Not at this point.
Not at this point?
No. But they would before they start the work. That's usually how I, how I did it.
You usually don't get that until after. Once they get awarded the bid, they turn it in.
It's okay, but I'd like that to be a condition of the award, because if you, I mean, this is up on top of the roof, and we don't need any disaster to happen.
We wouldn't let them start work without it.
Any questions about the bid and the process? If not, I'd like a motion to award the bid to, I don't know if we can, I don't know if there's on the words here. I'm just scrolling down here to find the, to find the name of the person that won the bid. It wasn't All Seasons.
Concept Carpentry.
For, can I have a motion to approve the work for the 1879 Schoolhouse Belfry Restoration Project at a cost not to exceed $15,640 to Concept Carpentry, Clamont, New Hampshire, with the appropriate certificate of insurance?
So move.
Did you get all that for us? No, nice.
No, that was a rather long motion.
Long-winded.
It's like a marathon motion.
Yeah, a marathon motion. I like it. Okay, it's been seconded by Kelly. Any discussion on the motion on the floor to award the bid to Concept Cabinetry?
Carpentry.
Carpentry, sorry. In the dollar amount not to exceed $15,640 for work on the 1879 building. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Everybody's got to catch up. Thank you. Police and fire radio discussion.
Do we have something for that, or is that just?
I think it's a discussion, so I'm going to, no, I don't see anything on our.
I didn't see anything either.
No?
You should have something in your packet.
Yeah, there is.
It's right before the warrant. And if it's not uploaded on your iPad, can you, can you refresh the packet for her?
Yep.
Not mine either, so she's coming over to fresh.
Yep. You can refresh, go ahead. Basically, just go back and click on the packet again.
So.
Go ahead.
I see that there's only one quote on here, and I think it's only fair being that we asked Raymond for multiple for his radios, that we should ask the same in the police department.
This was a state bid.
State bid.
Yep.
So.
So basically, the state bids out the.
Something that came in later in the day?
So we don't have any choice on this?
Oh, we do. Absolutely.
We can't ask for more?
We have choices.
Great. It just doesn't look like we do.
No, I, no, I get you. Well, this says discussion for tonight, so I'm not really, I'm not really, I'm in a, I'm in a learning mode here. So, so I, discussion means discussion, and it also means that it doesn't say action. So do I scroll backwards here?
Oh, like.
Or is it?
Does I know?
Or does it keep going?
I don't know. I can't find it.
It doesn't matter. I don't see, do you see a, what is the proposal from the police, son? Oh, it gives you a dollar amount and a bid and so forth and so on. Okay. I don't know, for me, this falls squarely. First of all, I'm not sure where we're going to get $18,000 from unless there's a grant that I don't know about. But this falls squarely under the same argument that I did with Ray. Maybe I won a friend and maybe I got an enemy. I don't know. But, but it says fire here also. I need to learn a lot more about the age of what radios we have, about the replacement, about the life of them, about what we're buying, and about whether or not the technology exists where we're either buying the right thing all the time or buying the wrong thing all the time. And I know how these things evolve, and somebody's, somebody else's throwaway is somebody else's treasure. And they work sometimes, and not, so I don't know enough about this. Now, having said all of that, including with the highway, I'd like to postpone this discussion for a whole nother reason. Including with the highway radios, I've been told that the ARPA grants that are coming in for the town are, one of the available uses is communication. And the highway radios and these radios or the fire radios, which certainly qualifies communications between all the, all those legs. So I'd like to at least postpone this discussion until tomorrow, is it, at 1:00?
Yep.
We're going to learn more as these ARPA funds, and they're significant. I mean, we're talking about June 11th of a couple of hundred thousand dollars, and that's the first stage.
Yep.
So when I asked myself about where we're going to get $18,000 from on the budget process, I really wasn't joking around. But, but, but more to the point, we must have, at least in, in police and in fire, some communication devices now, and are they all just broken and they're all trash? I hope not.
No, and I think Darren's on tonight, so do you want to, you want to hear from him?
Is he, Darren, you still on or? Do you need to unmute him?
He fell asleep.
He's probably not on.
Volunteer Fire Department.
He might not even be at his computer. You've unmuted him?
I asked to unmute.
Olivia, yep.
Yeah, so maybe we are.
Hearing nothing. I want to move to table this until at least the next meeting, but I need to ask the board to consider that Brandon needs to go through this ARPA funds because I don't feel comfortable, you know, starting to throw around these kinds of money. And I know that we postponed Ray's decision, but that, I learned about that only a week ago about listening. I was online to one of the conference calls when they, when they did throw out the communications are available or they are, they're going to qualify for some funding for that, for that money, so.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we got you. Want to talk about radios?
Yeah, at the last mutual aid meeting, we were talking, and there was some rumors going around that state police were going to go all digital. And as of October 1st, it's not a rumor, they are going all digital where the grants for the radios that we got 25 years ago will no longer be any good to communicate with state police, our own police amongst the fire service ourselves. So with everything going on in the world with drugs and stuff, I got into a situation just the other night where I didn't have a radio to call for police on an illegal burn. So we had to resort to our cell phone. And we all know cell phones aren't the greatest thing in the world, depending upon where you are.
Here's, I don't know if you just heard what I said, but.
No.
So I'll repeat it. We're supposed to be on a conference call tomorrow at like 1:00, or Brandon is, I'm not sure if I can make it or not. But I was on one a week ago where, maybe it was two, I'm not sure, where some of these, the American Rescue Plan is the big one that got passed by. Where some of these, the American Rescue Plan, uh, is the big one that got passed by Congress where Vermont is gonna be allocated some funds to recover through COVID-19. It, it's got some attachments to it, but we're going to learn more about the guidance about what those funds will be used for tomorrow and as this thing unwinds. And one of the uses that I heard was for communications for the towns, uh, departments. So I've asked that this discussion get postponed at least until we learn more. We're talking about money and we just got the police's proposal for radios and it, it's significant and it's up above what we didn't, obviously we didn't budget for any of this money. So, so I think this discussion will evolve and so I don't know what the state is doing. I don't know what dispatching is doing or, or, or what you just said, but we're gonna learn more about if we're gonna have any funds available to cover some of these. So I'm asking that everybody just bear with us when we get going.
No, and that, and that's fair. The state bid is, I think, what, 30,000?
Even fair.
When I priced the radios out for my budget that we're gonna be coming up in the, uh, 21, 22, without the state bid is $8,000. So I mean, that's, that's a pretty substantial savings if we can get the state bid on these.
So was there a date when you thought that the state was going to stop either or there was gonna be a, like a discontinuation of services? Was there a date that was attached to any of this or no?
October 1st. That's what, uh, I actually had to call the, uh, Barrett's to find out what he knew about it and he knew nothing. And then he had him calling up to Waterbury and said as of October 1st, that's when they switch over to the, the digital frequency which, you know, we don't have any communication with on our radio side.
Anything else? They'll, they probably threw that date out there though as an initial thing and then as it evolves, maybe that'll be extended. Let's hope so. Anyway, for tonight's purposes, I wanna move on and Brandon's going to, to, um, listen in. He's gonna participate in that thing tomorrow about these funds to have some kind of funding, uh, uh, where, what the source is. So that's it for tonight. Okay, for everybody? Let us go on to future agenda items. I, just off the top of my head, I wanna continue on with the personnel policy and I'd like to at least put a, to, to continue that. Brandon, you said you're gonna meet with the staff or something? Is that tomorrow or this week or something?
Yeah, on Thursday. So we, we've arranged a couple of months ago to have monthly staff meetings.
Good.
Um, where everybody can share information between departments and so forth. Um, and, and that happens the third Thursday of every month, so.
Um, and then the, I, I, I don't think this work at home policy is going to warrant the extensive research that, from what we all, I, unless I was in the wrong meeting tonight, I mean, everybody seemed to be clear about if you're gonna work, that that was just gonna be like an, an exception or, or some, some abnormal circumstance to be working at home.
Should we put it as like a clause, a small clause in the personnel policy? Just.
Yeah, I think so. What, what does the board think about that?
For short, for short term.
Yep, okay. Did, did you have?
Authorized.
Did you have a question, Ray?
Just a comment. Brandon, you'd said that the highway department's gonna have a separate meeting. Is that still true?
Yep.
I just wanna make sure they don't have to be over on Thursday. I'm gonna be out of town on Thursday.
Yep.
Um, future agenda item, town manager evaluation discussion? I don't know where you, we talked about that earlier, where you, whatever that's gonna be.
Did we do that? Oh, okay.
Yep.
Well, I, I don't know if it's an evaluation discussion or whether it was.
I just wanted, I just wanted to remind you of what we were talking about earlier that we were looking at that to be on, and something about that being on the next agenda.
Yes.
Just wanted to remind you.
Do you have a question?
No, for future agenda items, if you were ready for anything.
I'm ready.
Um, we, we had discussed here, uh, months ago about, um, Nimerick and, and coming in and, and what they would charge for, um, you know, um, doing the grant list and, and doing that kind of thing, uh, like other towns have had. I was just wondering where we were at with that and if we, uh, I, I think we left it where we wanted to get a better feeling and understanding of what they were giving us for the, uh, dollar amount. Um, and if it was representative of what we're actually getting with, you know, the Lister body. So I, I don't know if that's something that the board wants to continue to, to, to hear or, or, or understand.
I, I would like to.
Let me, let me just throw this out there. You know, we did through the budget process last fall, we did ask for, uh, when we were trying to assemble what dollar amount, we were trying to, to go over every department for that matter. Um, we did try to learn what the workload was that was established with all departments.
Right, right, yep.
Even Floanne or land use or the listers or everything. Um, and so the, the listers did provide us with, um, um, some information which gave us what they were doing. Um, but then there came a time when they thought it was too confusing and it was more of a, yes, this is what we're doing and so it's too hard to do. It's too hard to describe, which, so that kind of stopped the discussion from happening, from us to learn what the volume of work was doing. Now, early on tonight, you heard me say, I don't know, for me, I, I don't know what other towns are doing, but they must do it on a quarterly basis where they're updating like, like, like sales of properties and maybe a grievance of something. So it's not done on the basis, I think that we're doing that in the, in the, in the day-to-day, I've gotta get it done today thing. Because we did pass a budget last year where we did have an estimated grand list and we did present it to the voters about what their proposed tax rate was going to be. We didn't wait for six more months to come by and to fine-tune the grand list. Um, so it will catch up, the grand list will catch up, the documents will be in, in whatever the work that they're doing at some moment in time. Now, is it done specifically for the financial year 21, 22? No. No, none of it, none of it could possibly be done. There's gonna be a home sold after a deadline and it didn't make that. Or there's gonna be a permit issued by Chris Witten in zoning and it didn't quite make the deadline of the listers coming into the grand list. That doesn't mean that it's gone. It means that it's gonna be caught up at some moment. Does the board, does the board wanna continue with? We went through a lengthy thing last fall about, Brandon gave us a report of 144 towns specifically with zoning. And, but I think where it got stuck was that we had no way of learning what other towns got for that amount of money they were spending and we did not learn whether or not they spent more money, but didn't quite report it that way to the VLCT, the way it was presented in that report. That's the pushback we got from our, our own listers. We did, they weren't, we weren't able, so it was easy to read the report saying that other towns did it for 20,000 and ours is not. But, but what was hard was what did they actually do for the 20,000 and was there more that they were doing that was reported in a different division of their town? I don't know that.
Right, and I, and I think that goes to what I asked. We, we were, we asked for a follow-up from Nimerick who gave a quote of what their actual services were, because we just got a number. We didn't actually get do this, do this, do this, do this.
Yeah.
So we were making sure that we were comparing, uh, oranges to apples or apples to apples. Um, and yes, to your point, the, the listers did, um, start a little bit and then they said that whatever, whatever, whatever happened there. Um, but that doesn't mean we still can't go along. I mean, it's no different than asking any other company coming in, what, what do you do? We don't need, you know, we, we wanna see what they're gonna do for the money. That's all I was getting at. If we want, if we don't want.
Well, there's a, there's a re, I'd love to hear it. There's a reason why, and I know that we shut the office down for two weeks for COVID. However, having said that, everybody in the office worked. They, they, they worked from home or from remote or from out in the field and put on mileage to check on things or to do, to do some things. So, so it really wasn't a complete two-week layoff or two-week vacation or two-week that nothing happened. So that, that just didn't happen. The work was still going on.
Well, I, I, oh, I don't know.
509, go.
Well, I'm just saying, we're, we're getting into a discussion as opposed to.
Yes.
Future agenda item.
Did you, so, so.
I just asked if you wanted that on there.
Did you, did you want, so did you, so if it comes up though, I mean, I don't wanna sit in a meeting and go over this then, just like we're going over, so.
No, I'm just asking what they were gonna give us for the money. I don't think we got that.
Would you guys like me to, uh, to invite Nimerick to do a presentation on this?
It's up to the board, not me personally.
Yes. I, I, yeah, I'm like, sure.
Yes.
Is there anything else for future agenda? Cause we've got the warrants to pass and. Um, the, the last I knew, the Board of Civil Authority was having or has a request to, for an abatement of taxes. And I know that the Board of Civil Authority had an organizational meeting and I don't exactly know when that's gonna happen. One of the requests, and I don't know how the board wants to handle this, was that there's been a conversation between, uh, and I don't know whether this will evolve over the next couple of months or whether that Board of Abatement hearing will be opened, that, that there was a request to have the town manager put together a report for that Board of Abatement meeting. Does the, does the board want that to happen? I, I didn't know how to answer that question because, um, I know he's put together that lengthy report. It's about 50 pages and I, so I don't know what the board wants to do with him spending time to do that for the Board of Abatement. I, I don't see that meeting being over in one meeting. Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
I think, you know, just a summary of our findings, maybe not 50 pages, maybe a page or two, um, regarding, you know, what we learned through the process and maybe.
It's, it's com, it's coming on the radar because my, my, I, you, I think you told me that maybe by what, the end of June or something? That they wanted the, uh, less than that, the 20th or something?
First week of June, I think they wanted, first week of June.
First week, so that's, that's like three weeks from now. So we're not gonna, we may have a meeting on Monday.
Yep.
Only one meeting in June before that happens. Uh, let's do warrants. Need a motion to pass.
Make a motion to approve the warrants of May 17th, 2021. General Fund payroll, $13,443.09. Operating expense, $20,301.72. Um, Highway Fund payroll, $7,802.78. Operating expense, $13,311.06. Solid Waste Management Fund payroll, $1,552.83. Operating expense, $7,410.17. Library payroll, $1,937.70. Operating expense, zero. Grand totals payroll, $24,736.40. Operating expense, $41,022.95.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve the warrants dated May 17th, 2021. Any discussion? Looking around and I don't see any. See a magnifying glass. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, need a motion to adjourn, please.
Any other business?
Is there any other business before the board?
Um, has, has a representative been appointed to the highway yet?
No.
Joey, is that something you've ever considered?
I don't know what it entails. I don't wanna commit to it right now. To be honest, I wanna go home. I suck at that.
Well, well, wait, wait.
Motion to adjourn.
That, wait a minute.
No, but I can entertain them. Hold it. I didn't recognize you, Mr. Todd.
Hi.
Yeah, hi.
It's quick.
Is there another, is there another member that would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, boy.
Is there a second?
Okay, I don't hear a second. Now, Mr. Todd, go ahead.
I, I would be willing to be the rep to the highway department. If Joey doesn't wanna do it, nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it if you want me to do it. So I just put that out there to the board. You do what you want. You can vote on it tonight, next month. I don't care. I'll just, I'll do it if you want me to.
What would the board like to do? I hear silence.
Go home.
I second the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
There you go.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice. Everything is nice.
Perfect.